Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Media Borough Council meeting for September 18th, 2025. As we always do, I'd like to start by leading with a pledge of allegiance. If you'd all please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements to make. We have some meeting changes due to holidays coming up in the next several weeks. The Community Development Committee, which would normally happen on the 23rd, will now happen on September 30th, on Tuesday, September 30th, and the time of that meeting going forward is shifting to 4:30. So we'll just make sure if anyone wants to attend those meetings, that will be on September 30th at 4:30. The next Borough Workshop meeting has been advertised and is scheduled for Thursday, October 9th. October 2nd is Yom Kippur, and, you know, it is a very important holiday to a lot of people, so we will do workshop the following Thursday. That will remain at 7:00 PM. I believe those are the only two meetings that are impacted by the holidays this year. We have a presentation that we'll share in just a few moments, but before we do that, I have one order of business, which is the approval of minutes for the August 21st of 2025 council meeting. There was no workshop last month, so we only have one set of minutes to approve, and I'll entertain a motion to do that.
So move.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the August 21st, 2025 council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now I'd ask my fellow members of council and Mr. Mayor and anyone else, Brittany and Karen, if you'd like to join us in the front row. We have a presentation from the Minor Center at Lafayette University. It is the Minor Center for the Study of State and Local Government. Earlier this year, all members of council took part in a series of interviews and workshops to plan strategically for the borough's future. And they put together an executive summary, and that is what's going to be presented to you in just a few moments. So I appreciate that, and if you give us a minute, we'll relocate.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us back to do the final presentation for the visioning plan that we started back in, I believe, February of this year. And we have Nicole Beckett. She is the Associate Director for Public Services from the Minor Center at Lafayette College on speakerphone. So if there's any questions that I'm unable to answer, Nicole is on the speaker, so she can answer anything that you may have as well. So to begin with, I also wanted to note, the pictures that I put in the presentation were all stolen from your website. I saw them, and they were just so pretty. I figured that would look really nice if I put them into the PowerPoint presentation. So to begin with, I just wanted to go over the process overview. So this was a six-month collaboration between the Minor Center at Lafayette College, Borough Council, the staff, department heads, and the township's, sorry, the borough's manager, Brittany. What we had done was, we conducted several conversations with council members via Zoom. We had staff surveys, and we held two workshops. One was held with the staff, and the other was held directly with council members. Those events were held on the 14th, and they were basically to set the priorities for the vision for the borough, so that you have a plan of where you're going over the next five to 10 years. The results ended up being a 21-page report, and it provides the strategic framework based upon your input and your priorities. So this is what council and staff came up with as their priorities for the borough. From the sessions and from the conversations that we had with everyone, three strategic themes basically were developed, and we heard this over and over from the different members that we spoke to from council and from the staff. The first theme was safety and infrastructure, with the main concern being traffic calming specifically along State Road and Baltimore, the parking garage, the EMS service due to the hospital closing, and stormwater concerns. Under this theme, it basically shows that the council's real interest is community well-being. All of these direct impacts are going to basically make the community much stronger. It also represents that what you see as far as the safety and the infrastructure is more engineering solutions rather than policing, and you're going to see that throughout here when we get to some of the exercises that you all did. You'll see that the safety and infrastructure is basically going to be more so the engineering versus the policing. The second theme that came across was economic development and sustainability. There was concern for making sure that there was business retention, so that you're not seeing vacant buildings along the main district, bollards to help with events such as dining under the stars, and again, that kind of goes back to the safety. It also keeps the pedestrians safe, especially along State Street and Baltimore Avenue. And then there's environmental initiatives. The third theme is community services and quality of life, and these priorities are going to include the Third Street Pedestrian Bridge, affordable housing, and communication. It's important to note that as far as the affordable housing goes, council recognized the fact that that's going to need to be a collaborative effort between the county and the state and maybe some nonprofits in the area in order to have additional affordable housing. We had talked a lot about the fact that the borough is becoming very expensive for people to live in, and it's becoming unaffordable for many families. One of the first exercises that council did was the million-dollar exercise. So under this exercise, council was told, okay, we're going to give you an extra million dollars for your budget. It's an extra million dollars. It's not part of your current money. It's just an extra million dollars. And they had the choices of infrastructure, community services, housing programs, environmental initiatives, economic development, administrative improvements, and public safety as how they could allocate those funds. So each council member basically gave us what they would put towards each of these categories, and these are the percentages that came out as what is important to council as far as if they had an extra million dollars, how they would like to spend it. And that kind of goes along with all of your themes, because the infrastructure was your number one, your infrastructure and safety was your number one theme, and it shows here that 20.6% of that million dollars would go towards your infrastructure initiatives. Public safety came out in at the 10.9%, and that's not to mean that public safety isn't important. It basically just means that the council already believes that there's a strong, well-funded police department in place, and that it's not as urgent of a priority, given the fact that you already have the strong police department. So next, we're going to go through the priorities that were identified. We have the immediate priorities, the short-term priorities, and the long-term priorities. So under the immediate priorities, traffic calming was the number one priority that needs to be addressed immediately. And it's quite interesting to know that this is already underway. There's projects already in place. Brittany has already applied for grants for this, and it is moving forward. And this is basically going to enhance crosswalks and make the roads safer for the residents of the borough. Another immediate priority would be bollard initiative, and one of the things we had talked about was having bollards installed that can be removable, so that you could set them up for events around town, such as dining under the stars. So when you have residents out in the evening, it basically will protect them and keep them safe, which goes along with your number one theme again. The other immediate priority is the EMS enhancements, and this is where we talked about the issues with the two hospitals actually closing in the county. We talked about doing additional medical training for your police officers and to do better resident education, to let the residents know that due to the hospital closures, there's a chance that you're going to have longer transport times, and it's important to take those types of things into consideration and be aware of those facts. So for the short-term priorities, these are the priorities that would be accomplished within the next one to two years. And the priorities for the short term is the parking garage infrastructure, and this is going to be a big project. So it's not going to be something that's going to be occurring overnight, and you're at the turning point where you need to decide the process of how you're going to proceed. Is it going to be a rehabilitation project? Are you going to demolish it and replace it completely? And then what are you going to do with that building? Some of the options that were discussed was affordable housing. We talked also about possibly having housing on the upper levels, businesses on the lower levels, and we also talked about maybe just having it to be a garage. Some of the things you have to take into consideration with that short-term priority is going to be the financing options and any revenue impact that's going to be coming from the project. We talked about the Third Street Bridge project, which I believe Brittany said is a once-in-a-generation project, and a lot of the funding has already been secured for this. So at this point, it's basically following through to ensure that the project gets completed. And then stormwater management, which again, is, there's grants, significant grants already secured for this, and the council needs to work with the different departments and with management staff to determine which are the priority areas in the borough. Under the long-term projects, this is where affordable housing development comes in, and this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. Affordable housing is going to take some time, and it's going to take some partnerships. You're going to need to collaborate with county, with CDBG funding and home funding, with nonprofit organizations such as Habitat and Delco, I can't read it, it's too dark, Delco Housing Coalition. And then there are options to help with the affordable housing. One of the things you can do is you can look at your zoning and see if there's any way you can make upgrades and improvements to the zoning to allow for mixed use and to encourage rental units in the borough. The other long-term priority was sustainability and environmental initiatives. The borough has a very strong EAC, so at this point, we need to work, you guys need to work with the EAC to establish the priorities for the EAC projects. There's a lot of projects that they have going. However, you can't address them all at once, so the priorities need to be set, which ones are the most important, and then you need to move forward from there. So what does council need to do first? What we came up with as a result of the vision planning is that council should continue with the traffic calming momentum that you already have going, and you should move forward with the bollard installation specifically for State Street, and then focus on one or two of the major priorities that are in the short term, so that you have a path to go forward. And staff is going to need your clear implementation protocols in order to implement the priorities that you have set for them. When we met with the staff for the staff workshop, we talked about what the staff are going to need in order to make their jobs easier and make them more effective with the time that they have. In speaking with the staff, the borough has an excellent staff. They're very, very professional. They know their positions. They know their jobs, and they want to be able to get the work done for the residents of the borough. So some of the things that the staff said that they need in order to do their jobs is clear direction from the council as to project parameters and defined expectations of what you expect out of staff. They talked about closing the loop in communication, and when this one, what that basically means is, they expressed to us that sometimes they go to meetings, and there's a lot of talk at the meetings, but the information that's discussed at those meetings doesn't actually make it back to the staff that need to hear it. So the close-the-loop communication needs to develop some type of process so that everybody who needs to be involved is getting that information so that they can do their job effectively. They talked about having consistent focused and aligned objectives. They would like to see early financial inputs. There's a lot of projects that the borough wants to do. They need to be prioritized. You need to check to make sure that everybody understands the finances and what can be accomplished and what cannot be accomplished due to limited finances. All municipalities across the Commonwealth have issues with money. Of course, everybody has money issues, and everybody's got a lot of projects, so there needs to be early financial input to determine which projects are going to be the ones that are most important. And when we looked at those priorities, those priorities were set to guide council in making the decisions of what they felt was the important priorities and what were the important projects. Staff also expressed the need for quality over quantity. Having too many projects going at one time makes the projects rushed, and the final output for the projects isn't going to be good quality. Their preference is to do projects, they want to do all the projects, but they want to be able to do them in a way that they can do them slowly and correctly, so that they don't have to be redone over time. And then the one that's not up here that I forgot to write on the slide was timely communication updates. And this had to do with the media for, I think it was the rec coordinator, who does the communications and the updates to the site to get the information out. There was a, there's a lack of ability for her to be able to go in and make those adjustments on her own, and they're not being done timely. So that needs to be addressed so that she could do her job quicker and more effectively. The resources that you're going to need to do this, you already have your strong borough manager in place, along with a very, very professional staff, and you have the CIP in place, so that you have money delegated for many of these projects to begin with. So you need to just basically work with your staff, work with the budget and your CIP, and then start working on those immediate priorities that you've identified. Next step is to make sure that this is actually being implemented. Last thing you want to do, you guys have spent a significant amount of time on this. You put a lot of energy into it and a lot of thought. You don't want to just take the report now and stick it on a shelf. So you need to follow through, and we're suggesting that be done through quarterly meetings and progress reviews to ensure that the staff are following through on the items that they're supposed to. The report is very detailed, and it talks about the action items. It talks about your priorities and what action items need to happen, and then the lead department, and it also talks about who's responsible. So you need to hold people to the work that's in there and who said that they could do what. We talked about this with the staff. They know that these were the priorities. They've agreed upon them as well, as the council members have. Monthly tracking for the immediate priorities and to review it when you're working on your annual budget, and everybody knows it's budget season. So now is the time to actually look at the report and then determine, okay, what priorities are we going to be moving forward with next? And that is it. Does anybody have any questions?
If I just may, before you go into questions, can you all hear me okay? Okay, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Minor Center, thank you so much. This was a pilot project for us. It's been uniquely rewarding for the center, because typically when we're working with the municipality, we're with municipalities facing significant organizational challenges. The Media Borough represents the opposite of that, a borough with strong leadership in the elected officials, capable administration, and clear community engagement. This project allowed us to focus on strategic advancement rather than crisis management, which showcases what is possible when municipal government functions well. And the framework reflects the borough's existing strengths, which is engaged leadership, professional administration, and genuine community connection. Our role here was simply to organize your priorities into an actionable strategy, so the foundation for successful implementation already exists in that room and in your borough hall. So I just want to thank you for a positive experience on our behalf, and we hope that we were able to serve you well. You know, Jen will be able to answer questions as light, if you have any, but we just wanted to extend that because that is our reality, is oftentimes we are out there for crisis versus proactiveness. So thank you.
Thank you so much for your work on this. It was a pleasure working with you both. And I just was, I was wondering if maybe you could provide, just a clarification, especially for residents and maybe members of the community that are present tonight, on the difference between this engagement and what was produced and a comprehensive plan, which we're also in the middle of, because I know residents have been hearing a lot about our comprehensive plan, and in fact, we're having an open house coming up very soon.
Nicole, do you want me to address that, or do you want to address it?
It would probably best if you did, Jen, just because of being in the room. So if I need to jump in, I will.
Okay. So this was just a visioning plan. This isn't a document that's required at all. It's something that Borough Council was doing to be proactive, to basically establish a path forward to make improvements in the community. The difference between this and a comprehensive plan is that a comprehensive plan is a document that is required. You're supposed to have one completed every 10 years, and there are specific things that have to be listed in your comprehensive plan, and there's a specific process that has to be filed, or followed, I should say, when you're actually developing your comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan goes into a lot of demographic information. Our report here did not go into any demographic information at all. The comprehensive plan's going to go into your types of housing that you have. It's going to go into your businesses. It's going to go into all of the park facilities, all of the municipals' facilities, the police, the fire department. It's going to go over every tiny little aspect of the borough. And it's a required plan, and it's required that you have community participation. So you can't just have a group of people sit down and say, let's make this plan. You actually have to involve the community. You have to do advertising for it. You have to do publications for it, and then you actually have to go and adopt it at a public meeting with council. So it's actually very, very different from this visioning plan, and it's a lot more detailed, and it is, probably costs a whole lot more than this report does. I know that I've done two of them when I was in Williams Township and in Lower Mount Bethel Township. They take, in my case, they took two years. The one took two years, the other one took about a year to get done. So it's a longer process, a much longer process, much, much more detailed than the visioning plan.
Thank you so much. That was, sure, thank you.
Any other questions? And just to follow up, Councilmember Malkun, the comprehensive plan open house or the public meeting, I'm not sure what they're calling it, it's on September 29th. That is Monday, September 29th, at 7:00 PM. I believe it's in the parlor room. Is that correct?
It is.
Yes, okay. And again, we'll mention that. I'm sure that Brittany will mention it in her report as well, but that's an opportunity for anyone in the community to come speak to the comprehensive plan. And we, you know, I look at this as sort of verification of how we're approaching our comprehensive plan. This really gives us those guardrails and guides as far as how we're going to proceed over these next six months or so. So that's an excellent question. Thank you very much. If there are no more questions, I would thank, again, Jennifer Smethers, who didn't, I forgot to introduce you, Associate Director for Municipal Services with the Minor Center at Lafayette College, and Nicole Beckett, thank you for being on the phone. She is the Associate Director for Public Services at the Minor Center for the Study of State and Local Government at Lafayette College. It was a great experience, and I'm sure I speak for my colleagues when, just a big thank you. And it's pretty, it's pretty interesting reading.
It was, it was a really fun project for us and getting to know everybody. One of my first projects at the center, so.
Oh, great.
It was, it was very, very informative for me as well.
And I believe the, I don't know if the report itself, but the slide deck will likely be online.
We can absolutely put it online.
Yeah, and put it online, so that the public can have a chance to look at it and see, you know, where we're heading. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. We're going to take a brief break, and then we'll return in a moment, once we break everything down from the presentation. And we're back. Thank you so much. We will now move into the part of our meeting that allows for public comment and privilege of the floor. You have two opportunities during the meeting to speak, once before our agenda items and once afterward. There are two ways to get your comments to us. You can email them to comments@mediaborough.com, or if you are present, you're welcome to stand up, give us your name and address, which we need for our record, and state your, state whatever you'd like to state. Ms. Rapinoe, do we have any emailed comments?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone public, from the public, who would like to step to the mic? Identify yourself and...
Good evening. Hi, Erica Berman, 659 West Baltimore Avenue. So I'm here for another reason tonight, but I do want to say, I wasn't able to make workshop, but I understand that council's going to ask this listener to move forward with drafting an amendment for polystyrene and revisit black plastic at another time. And while the EAC is disappointed we're not going to be including black plastic at this time, we hopefully will be able to consider that amendment later on down the road. I am glad that we're moving forward with eliminating polystyrene, because that is a huge issue, so we are grateful for the support of council for that. So another item I'm here for is an event that happened today that was upsetting. A resident along Baltimore Avenue illegally removed a State Street tree, which is not a public tree. Whether they knew that it was, you know, supposed to be handled by Public Works or not, you know, there needs to be penalties. I know we have a tree ordinance, you know, either we need to do more education to get it out, or if these people knew that they were not supposed to do that, and then they continued to remove the tree. You know, all trees are important. I don't need to educate you on why trees are important, but it's especially important when you're on the west end. It's a heat island down there. There's not a lot of trees. I'm like the very last house in the borough across from Aqua Vita. So when you walk from like Glen Providence Park out of the park into that, like, concrete, it's noticeably warmer. It also helps with stormwater. We've got a lot of stormwater at our end that runs down Baltimore Pike. Those roots help, and, you know, it's hot down there, helps with clean air. But it just, it's one of the few trees that's left along Baltimore Pike. There was a large tree that unfortunately was sick and had to be taken down in 2021. So it's the one next to that, and I just asked, like, I know I talked to Jen, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Malkun, and I know that you will be giving an update on this, but perhaps shade tree commission could, and maybe I, there is a plan, and I'm not aware of it, if it's like a tree for a tree, whether it's sick or taken down illegally, like, we are replacing the trees. I would love to see more trees down at that end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the borough aware of the situation, Brittany?
Yes.
Okay, just make, Ms. Foreman, sorry.
Yeah, so certainly aware of the situation, and it is a shade tree. Our shade tree ordinance does have penalties built into it, but I think it's also important for everyone to learn that even with our penalties built into it, we have to do a notice of violation with the dollar amount that's associated with the fine. That all goes to the district justice, the magisterial district justice, and sometimes when you go to court, they decide to do something different. They decide not to fine them. They decide to, you know, have some sort of other workaround. So that is a system in which we operate, but we have in the past gone down that route, and it is certainly like an enforcement option that we have. and it is certainly like an enforcement option that we have.
Can I have a question? Is there anything in the ordinance about, like, if somebody removes a tree, in addition to a fine, or instead of a fine, that they're required to replace it or pay for tree planting?
The, in the ordinance, there is a fine. I don't know if it's also included that they pay for the replacement. Do you know?
I do not believe that's in the ordinance. No. Not for a shade tree.
Certainly something to consider.
Yeah. For a land development process, when you take it down, there is a very specific tree replacement kind of formula, but not for shade trees.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Ms. Foreman said. Public Works is aware of it. Shade Tree Commission is aware of it. So there will be conversations about the direction forward for a violation of the code. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Morgani, 28 Barron Road. I am here on behalf of the Media Area Girls Softball Organization, otherwise known as The Swarm. We're very appreciative of the field use at Barrow Field. We take a lot of pride in maintaining the fields and helping out with the fields, also providing opportunities for tons of young ladies in the area. We just do have some concerns about the status of the fields. So there's two fields, two backstops that can be used for older softball groups. The one field closer to the tennis courts, starting last spring, was completely washed out. Jasper Street was flooding. Water was coming over the wall at the tennis courts, and it wiped out the entire infield of the softball field, of the intermediate field. I know in order for us to get it back up and running to finish the season, we ordered a couple tons of dirt, brought a small tractor in, planed it out, made it usable. The next week, it rained again, and it washed all of that work away. We provide the opportunity for hundreds of young ladies to play softball at all different age groups, from T-ball all the way up to 14U. And it's not really possible with one field, so we just wanted to bring it to the council's attention and see if there was any plan for making that field usable, but also sustainable and not having to be repaired every rainstorm. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much for stopping by and sharing. So just wanted to mention a couple different things. So the, we are in a, ooh, what is it called? An agreement with the school district related to the field specifically. And there's very, I think it's just a maintenance agreement for Barrow Field, and specifically, we each have very things that we are responsible for doing. So the field usage, like, the actual field itself is school district. So one, I was going to wonder if you would reach out to school district about it. We have started to have a very good collaboration because, obviously, not just The Swarm, but our media residents use that whole area, and the school district kids use that whole area. So we've started to build a really good relationship with, well, we were working with Cabrina, I'm not sure if she's still the president. So Cabrina, as well as the school district facilities person and the head of the school over there. And so we have a really good communication line with them, and we're trying to work together, and we're trying to, you know, get grants to help to do some other things that are nearby, but the field itself, any of the turf management is school district responsibility.
We've talked to them in the past, and we've had problems getting the field to vote so that they're usable several times throughout the season, even after I have softball in. It certainly is conducive to developing young athletes and other skills. And just this washout problem. We spent probably a good 12 hours over the weekend trying to get the field ready for the next week, just for it to be washed away.
Yeah. So I would, I was just going to say, I would suggest, so if you, why don't you reach out to me via email? My information's on the website, and I'll follow up with yourself and Cabrina, and we'll get connected to the school district again just to, you know, see what we're able to do.
I was, oh, I was just going to say, Dr. Malash is the superintendent, and Chip Allinger is the athletic director over there, and I would make sure you CC him on everything because, as Ms. Foreman has said, we're unfortunately not able to help. I mean, I feel really, really bad for the situation that you find yourselves in. This is unfortunately not new. I've heard Swarm talk about this for a long time, I think annually. It feels like the last couple of years, and I'm very sorry to hear that this continues. But I would, I would pressure Chip Allinger.
And I just wanted to bring it here because last spring I had the opportunity to be at the field, and we got one of those mons videos of just water. Jasper Street, right at the end of that alley, was completely flooded halfway up the Par's Field, and that water was all just pouring over right onto the tennis courts, and I couldn't, the tennis courts were just overwhelming to drink.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. Another thing that I was just thinking, I know we have a lot of scout troops. I know we honored someone last year for an Eagle Scout project. This would be something to potentially, I don't know if you have any members of the teams that are in the scouting program, but that might be something that an Eagle Scout project could focus on, you know, either the water diversion or something else to help protect the fields. Thanks again. Anyone else care to speak? Hearing none, we will now move on to our Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I had a couple of dates to remind you all, but I think the President, Pekoff, was able to do that. So I just have two other small announcements. One is related to the comprehensive plan, which, again, we're having an open house where folks will be able to, from the public, will be able to come and see some of the draft goals. Again, the comprehensive plan is really our guide over the next 10 years. How are we growing as a community? What are we doing with our land use, right? Everything that touches land and development and our facilities, that's what the comp plan is focused on. And so it's a really great opportunity to shape your community, and so we're hoping and asking for residents to come out. It's on Monday, September 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. You can stop by at any time, and there's just going to be some boards with, you know, particular topics where you can walk around and share some input on how things are shaping up over the next 10 years. So encourage everyone to come out for that. And lastly, I wanted to share that we're just deep into the budget process right now. I certainly want to thank our finance team for spending long hours working on our budget. There is a deadline that I wanted to put out there, which is September 25th, which is a week from today. That's for our nonprofit organizations. There are, we have a small, we set aside a small but significant part of our operating fund for nonprofits that have an impact on the quality of life of borough residents. And so if our nonprofits are interested, please do submit your information. It is due on September 25th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our Borough Manager? Hearing none, we'll move on now to the Engineer's Report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple updates on some capital projects. If you've been around town, you'll notice that the road program has kicked off. So our road program, our streets along Monroe, basically from Baker down to Franklin, including some improvements for ADA ramps and some paving over in the west end of town, Brook Street and Painter Street. Again, I really want to emphasize a lot of thanks to our friends at Pendott, our friends at the county, and our contractor who are working to make sure that we're in compliance with the new deadlines that are set by the county and by Pendott this year. It takes a fair amount to make all the paperwork be checked correctly, but again, we are on track to make sure that we're in compliance with all the associated grantors. So big thanks to Moore Brothers Construction. We have received paperwork for both the traffic calming at Lemon and Jefferson and for the CDBG project for the 11 ADA ramps that'll be improved this fall. The county requires, this is a little unusual, paper ink signatures. So most of our world runs by computers and through things like DocuSign and those services, but I have this with me tonight, so I'll coordinate with Borough Manager Bucketing, not only the signatures, but also the borough seal, which is an embossed thing. So there's a couple, a couple of projects we're moving forward, but we have the paperwork, we have the executed contracts, and then we will issue the preconstruction meeting with the county for both of those contracts, and then issue the notice to proceed so they can get rolling.
And do you have to fax it in? Sorry.
I'll bring my Palm Pilot.
Oh, my God.
Plum Street, we have, we've seen the improvements for the additional furniture. I think it looks nice. It was the vestry furniture that we shipped from overseas, took a little bit of time, was assembled, I think, in early September. I had just gotten back from vacation. Nice improvements, big, enjoyable, colorful furniture, adds a nice dimension, I think. And then we have received word that our shade structure, which is, I believe, one of the final elements of that site, is in fabrication in Texas. So it'll take a little bit of time to get that, get that to us, but hopefully within the next month or so, we will get word that that is completed and have that shipped up. So looking forward to that one. I did want to note that the county is going through its Act 167 revisions. What that means is that the county, the county holds a special plan for all of the watersheds in Delaware County, so there are seven major watersheds or so. And specifically, they asked the towns for pointed areas of troublesome or problematic stormwater areas. The area that was mentioned tonight for Barrow Field was one of them. So it's on a list, it's naturally, it's one of our, it's been on our list for quite some time for some areas for improvement, but it's also been added to the county. So what that does, it sets us up for additional funding for any additional capital projects that we might see. The county will be hosting, I think, a meeting, I think, in November to talk about the results of their findings of the submissions of all the different towns and all their stormwater issues. So good to know, or good movement on that one. We did have the bid opening for the traffic calming feature, pardon me, it is, it was part of our traffic calming plan for the rapid rectangular flashing beacon at, over at the Holly House, it's at Fifth and Providence. There was a little bit of an issue with this, and I think, since we just had this bid opening yesterday, there are some things I think that need to be a little bit fine tuned. Instead of awarding this tonight, I'm recommending that this go back to the Transportation Committee for a little bit more consideration. I'd like to work with the contractor, make sure that we have a good alignment. Primarily, there are two things on my mind. Primarily, we only have so much of a grant cap, and I want to try to make sure that we are doing any value engineering that we can do and optimizing all the resources we have in those grants to make sure that we get the, you know, the effective dosing of the traffic calming treatment while at the same time maintaining our grant caps and being faithful to that. So my recommendation for this isn't to award it tonight, which I kind of wanted to do, but is to send it back to Traffic or Transportation Committee. There's still plenty of time. So I have spoken to the vendors and to the contractors who say that the equipment associated with this is available in stock. So it's not something where we would have to wait for it to come in from overseas or to be manufactured in Texas. It's available in a yard somewhere right now. So if we can get work through some of the administrative hurdles, I would like to be in a position to award this in October. Unless there's any other questions, I would like to, just on a personal note, say I did not be, I wasn't able to make it to the Bob McMane honoring ceremony. Bob McMane, was his first marriage that he performed was for my mother and my stepfather way back in May of 1992.
Way back.
Yeah, that's right.
Wow.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
About that.
That concludes my report.
That's great, thank you. Any questions for our engineer? Hearing none, we'll move on now to the Mayor's Report. Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the solicitor. You said the mayor, that's what my head went. We move on to now to our Solicitor's Report. Ms. Burns.
Hi, nothing to report tonight, so it wouldn't matter if you skipped.
Thank you. Any questions for the Solicitor? Hearing none, we'll move on now to the Mayor's Report.
I have nothing either, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, complaints this, this past month, 638, which is really high. Have to get that down. We had 638 complaints, as I said. Dining in the Stars the other night was really good. We have two more, two more, two more to go. We've all agreed to that, that's going to be over at the end of the month. And let's see, what else do I have? I don't have that much tonight, so I'll let it go.
I believe it's just one more for Dining Under the Stars on the 24th. Yeah, last night, unfortunately, the weather.
I can't tell.
From happening. It's just the timing of the months and the dates.
I tried to sneak it in.
October 1st is a Wednesday, so, thank you, Mayor. Any questions for Mayor McMane? Hearing none, we'll move on now to our Council and Committee Reports. We'll start with Transportation. Mr. Herman, Councilmember Trey Herman. Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any other announcements, and this month's traffic education topic is on e-bikes in media. Our Transportation Committee supports the safe, legal, and efficient movement of vehicles, pedestrians, and vendors, and both bicycles and e-bikes. There are laws that govern the different classes of bicycles and e-bikes and motorized devices in Pennsylvania. We recommend becoming familiar and educating yourself with the rules, which can be found on Pendott's website. E-scooters are not street legal in Pennsylvania. They are, there are no outlined rules for riding these devices. In July, Senator Tim Kearney announced plans to introduce Abbey's Law, which is named in honor of Abigail Gillan, a 12-year-old girl who tragically passed after an e-scooter accident in Aston. Currently, riding electric scooters is generally limited to private property. Please remember that anyone under the age of 12 must wear a helmet when riding a bicycle. That's it for me.
Thank you. And I guess your item of business is bolt, so I'll deal with that next month. Any questions for Councilmember Herman? Hearing none, we'll move on now to properties and public works. Councilmember Joy Washington, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements and no items of business tonight.
Any questions for Councilmember Washington?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for being here.
Just here for the votes.
Do you know how I feel now?
Yep.
Move on to Finance and Media Business Authority. Council Vice President Elizabeth Romaine, Ms. Romaine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one liaison announcement. Fall Festival is next, no, in two, it's in a couple of Sundays. It's Sunday, October 5th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That is a growing event. The, it is completely sold out from like a vendor and sponsor perspective, but I'm hoping for really good weather, so hope to see you all there on State Street on that Sunday. I will be at the merch tent. Moving forward with my regular agenda items, just a couple of housekeeping items. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2026 healthcare renewal and purchase agreement. We discussed this at workshop. This is really just renewing the agreement that we're in so that we can move forward to get healthcare for employees. So I make that in a form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the 2026 healthcare renewal and purchase agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
My next item is the adoption of the 2025 minimum municipal obligation for non-uniformed employees in the amount of $0. I make that in a form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2025 minimum municipal obligation for non-uniformed employees in the amount of $0, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to make a motion, actually not finally, just kidding. Next, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2025 minimum municipal obligation for police officers in the amount of $791,562.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2025 minimum municipal obligation for police officers in the amount of $791,562, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Finally, I'd like to ratify the payment of bills for August for the general fund, For liquid fuel funds, $0. For the recreation fund, $3,935.94. For the capital fund, $60,383.1 cent, in the total amount of $407,147.68. I make that in a form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? That one cent is probably really important.
Is it one cent or one cents?
One cent.
It said one cent.
Yeah. All those in favor of ratifying the payment of bills for August in the amounts outlined by Vice President Romaine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Vice President Romaine? Hearing none, we'll move on to my report and swiftly move on to the next. Uh, I don't have any liaison announcements. CDC did meet last month, uh, and, uh, Planning Commission is, is going to be entertaining items, uh, that were held off, uh, next month, uh, from their September meeting. Uh, zoning, uh, hearing board, uh, I don't believe they're meeting this month, but that's something that, uh, Councilmember Malkun will be able to explain. Um, and that's it. We do have quite a few events coming up in the borough. Uh, Porch Fest is Saturday. The media garage sale is also Saturday. Uh, on the 27th, eh, we have the Delaware County, no.
10th.
The 28th, when is, when is the Historical Society downhill?
Downhill Derby.
It's on the 27th. That's, that's what I, okay. So the downhill derby is the 27th on Saturday. On the 28th, we have several items going on. We have the Delco 10-miler, um, that will just close a portion of 252 very early, and then they'll be on their way. Uh, and I know the police chief is very, uh, you know, will get that road back open as soon as possible in the event of anybody needing to get to the hospital. EcoFest as well, I believe, is the 28th. Uh, that, 27th, I'm sorry. And that's at Heritage Park, what time?
10 to 2.
10 to 2, thank you. And I think that's, oh, the 28th is also the date of the painting of the mural, uh, on State Street that was approved by CDC, and that's scheduled for the 28th as well. All right, uh, those are my announcements. I have no items of business, and that concludes my report. And we'll move on now to public safety, recreation, and the Civil Service Commission. Uh, Councilmember Kevin Boyer, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've pretty much taken my liaison announcements away, so.
Garage sale is this Saturday.
Supposed to be nine till noon, but we all know that, um, the earlier the better, so people will be on your doorstep at the crack of dawn if you have stuff out, which isn't such a bad thing. And then the second annual Porch Fest, as, uh, President Pecov said, is 12 to 5. There are at least, I think, 30 musical, uh, well, bands and other musical groups scheduled throughout the borough. You can see the schedule if you go to the borough website, and they're scattered throughout the borough, and it should be a great time. Um, and it's the second annual, so it was a success last year, and we're doing it again this year. Um, I do have two mass gathering permits to, um, I guess pass. Uh, the first is the mass gathering permit for the Visit Delco PA Delco 10-miler. As President Pecov mentioned, this will be on Sunday, September 28th. It'll involve closing, um, Providence Road 252 from approximately 7:00 a.m. till 10:00 a.m. And I make that in a form of a motion.
Motion has been made, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for Visit Delco PA Delco 10-miler to be held on Sunday, September 28th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And the other, um, mass gathering permit that we, um, need to pass would be for the Media Arts Council Pride Flag Street mural painting. This will be on Sunday, September 28th, from 6:00 a.m., and that will require that little portion of State Street to be closed until 5:00 a.m. the next morning, which is Monday, but it should open at 5:00, so it shouldn't disrupt traffic. Um, you will be able to park on State Street on either side of it, but you just won't be able to get through because obviously they'll be painting the crosswalk. So I, um, ask that we approve the mass gathering permit for the Media Arts Council Pride Flag Street mural painting on Sunday, uh, September 28th, from 6:00 till, uh, 5:00 a.m. on Monday.
Motion has been made, and I will use my privilege to second it myself. Um, that is, uh, it's important to me for a number of reasons, so, um, anyone else hear a second?
Second.
Yep. Uh, motion's been made and seconded, all those, uh, anyone, uh, any discussion on the matter? All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the Media Arts Council Pride Flag Street, Street mural painting to be held Sunday, September 28th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to Monday, September 29th, 2025, at 5:00 a.m. with a rain date of October 19th, 2025, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Councilmember Boyer?
Um, not directly to Councilmember Boyer. Uh, I guess it's for Visit Delco. I just noticed that some of their lawn signs for like the, the Chalk Festival they had a couple of months ago are still up in, in the borough.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I guess we should reach out to them and say, hey, pick up your, your lawn signs, please.
Yes, I think that's, uh, do we have a process, Ms. Forman, for?
Well, first of all, um, lawn signs are not permitted in the public right-of-way unless there's, uh, you know, election signs during a certain period. Um, but aside from that, like event signs or, um, when you see people doing business signs, they're not permitted in our right-of-way. So when you see them, you let codes know, they will pick them up. If they start seeing a pattern of a certain business doing it, or a certain organization, they will reach out to them and say, hey, I have 20 of your signs, you know, um, come get them, or we're going to trash them, that kind of thing. So we try to communicate with the, with them as they're doing that. Signs are allowed on people's personal property, but they're not allowed in the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just have a comment. I, I, I just want to thank the Rec Committee and, and everybody that's on that Rec Board. Um, there's been one after another event that's just been magnificent. Um, and if you take a look at all at the map for Saturday, for the Porch Fest, for the, uh, for the garage sale, i- it is so well put together and organized, I, I just, kudos to everybody on the Rec Board and to Jen Metzger.
Love Jen.
Yeah, it's just terrific.
She's really made a day.
Yep, yeah, so, anyway, thank you. Uh, if hearing no other comments, I'll move on now to personnel.
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry?
May I just add something?
Sure.
There is a false, um, advertisement on a website that we are having a shredding event here on Saturday in the parking lot.
Oh.
I think we have enough going on, on Saturday.
Yeah.
Um, so we have posted it, and we've, um, on our website that it's wrong, but we have gotten a lot of calls about it, so just wanted to mention that there is no shredding event. The next one is November 8th at Strathhaven High School.
Thank you, Ms. Rapinoe. Uh, I assume if people show up, the police will remind them that it's not happening, so, thank you very much. Uh, moving on now to personnel, environmental advisory council and library, Councilmember Lisa Gelman, uh, Ms. Gelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a couple liaison announcements. Um, one is that the EAC is hosting a documentary showing of the story of stuff at the media library, Saturday, October 4th at 3:00 p.m. They are asking people to register as space is limited. Um, the library, as you know, has a lot going on besides just books. They still have the Native Seed Library, they're doing cooking lessons, they do knitting, they do book clubs and so forth, um, along with museum passes and so forth, so, um, so please check out the website and know all that's happening at the library. Um, the library volunteers are getting ready for their semi-annual book sale, um, for next month, October 18th, 19th, and 20th. And then EAC adjacent, you were, mentioned, um, the EcoFest is September 27th at Heritage Park. So those are the liaison announcements. Um, I have one legislative item, and that is approval of hiring Alexis McManus as the finance coordinator. Um, I believe everybody's gotten a chance to take a look at qualifications and so forth in Dropbox. Brittany, did you want to?
Sure. So we did a extensive search, public search, um, and we wound up receiving around 20 resumes. We had nine interviews, and, um, Ms. McManus was, uh, a star interviewer, and we're really excited to have her. We think she has some really, um, good background inform, good background experience that will be a benefit to the finance department and our HR, um, functions as well, as, as the personnel committee has asked us to continue to share, there is a, um, she is the spouse of Josh McManus, who is a, um, full-time employee in the Public Works Department. Um, but we really think that she has the best overall fit and had have the greatest value add to the organization in the long run, so we are recommending her hire.
Excellent, and, um, I'm sure Jill Jacobs', um, loss will be felt, but I'm very excited that we were able to, um, I thank the borough and the staff for their time and efforts in going through all of the resumes and the interviews, and I greatly appreciate getting a star staff member. So I, um, I bring that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of hiring Alexis McManus as finance coordinator, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Councilmember Gelman? I just have one clarification. The polystyrene will be brought up next month, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So just so that it's not being forgotten, we're just putting it on next month's, uh, schedule. So, thank you so much.
Little snafu, I don't expect that that would make any adjustments or enhancement or anything.
It's really not going to, yeah, exactly.
So we'll have that on the agenda for October.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, moving on now to Shade Tree Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, Councilmember Jen Malkun, Ms. Malkun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't have any, um, announcements for either zoning. I, I haven't gotten notification yet that zoning hearing board is meeting this month, so.
I don't believe they are, as Planning Commission didn't push anything forward.
So, um, uh, and yeah, just a reminder for folks, um, uh, kind of going off of what our resident, um, shared this evening, if there's any question about shade trees in the borough, again, shade trees are, um, trees that are planted in the borough's right-of-way in that strip, um, along the sidewalk, um, they are public trees. If there's any question about a tree that might be in that area, um, whether it's the health of the tree, or perhaps removing some branches, um, uh, please, we invite you to go to the borough's website under Shade Tree Commission. There's a list of options for you. One of them is to request a shade tree evaluation. There's another option for you to request a tree trim or tree removal, um, in which case then, the Shade Tree Commission, along with the borough's arborist, would visit the tree and evaluate it. Um, and we do contract with a specific tree, um, with a specific tree company, uh, to do all of the tree work for our public trees. So just a friendly reminder. Uh, that concludes what I have for this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for Councilmember Malkun? Public comment will be in just a moment. Um, I, uh, want to, uh, just, I had a question for you, and I can't remember what it was. Uh, oh, yes, um, Shade Tree Commission, a year or two ago, sent out a really terrific flyer about the work that they do, and I just wondered if, um, that only went to residents or if it also went to property owners? Because one of the things that I remember happening in the last couple of years, right down my street, on Second Street, a tree was removed, but it was the new owner of the property, it had been sold. And when, uh, Mr. Jeffrey went and talked to that new owner, he was very apologetic and actually wound up planting a couple of trees. Uh, and I wonder if maybe more of an educational component, um, would help, uh, not only for residents, but also for people who happen to be property owners. I don't know if that's something we could, we could, you know, that Shade Tree could take up.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, community education and information sharing is a part of what Shade Tree Commission does. Um, and I hear what you're saying in terms of, like, a transition, if there's a change in ownership and maybe a person who's new to the borough and doesn't understand the, the codes. Um, so I think that there's probably, I see this as an opportunity to bolster and increase, um, communication and education, um, but also probably operations in some way. So, uh, I really look forward to working with Public Works and, um, the Shade Tree Commission on, like, evaluating this and see what lessons we can learn from it.
Great. And, and of course, if the ordinance needs revisiting, we can do that as well.
Revisit the ordinance?
Yes, as far, you know, as far as, uh, putting in their requirement to replace.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, as of now, um, yeah, it's, uh, there's only a penalty, a fine. Um, there's not a requirement to replace.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I had a question. Um, I think it was last year, I believe it was last year at this time, I think it was the last Dining Under the Stars that Shade Tree gave trees at Dining Under the Stars.
Oh, yeah.
Are they doing that this year?
That was on the 17th.
Oh.
That would have been yesterday, and it was canceled.
And it was canceled. So will that be next week?
Yeah, are they, are they going to bump it to next week? Are they going to?
Oh, um, that's a great question. I can get back to you and let you know that.
Okay.
Stay tuned, we'll post on the website if that, that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I hope so, too. Um, my oak is doing great. Um, any more questions for Councilmember Malkun? Hearing none. Uh, it is now our second opportunity for public comment, privilege of the floor. If there's anyone, uh, present that would like to speak, uh, please step to the microphone after I ask Ms. Rapinoe if we have any email comments. We do not. Great, thank you very much. It's your opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Hello, Denise Pomilio. I'm a resident here on Fourth Street. Several things. Uh, question first, with the public, um, affairs on State Street, is it true that dogs are not permitted?
Yes.
Could there be signs that state that dogs are not permitted?
I, I will let.
Generally speaking, for events that require, um, road closures, so for example, for Dining Under the Stars, um, there is a rule about, um, no dogs in the closed-off areas.
How about the festivals that, uh?
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay.
Like for Fall Festival, for example. What's that?
That is not enforced, and that's a troublesome thing. Personally, I've twisted my angles trying to avoid dogs on their trolley tracks. Um, I have children that are afraid of dogs, that do not attend the festivals because of their, they're the dogs. And it states on almost every intersection that no dogs are allowed, but that's not enforced. Could we see that that be enforced for children and adults that would enjoy the festival had not be the dogs?
Thank you.
Number two, the shade trees, love the shade trees. However, this has been addressed, my daughter lives on 419 West Baltimore Avenue. There's a particular tree there, and I spoke to Mike Green, um, last year. The base of the tree is a bush itself, and the erosion that it is causing and the root base of that tree is, is disturbing the sidewalks, and, uh, the root is going up the dog walk, and it's really troublesome when you step out of your car, if you can even park there at all. Because the, the, again, the bush, the tree has a bush at the bottom of the tree. Not opposed to having trees planted there, but ideally, my opinion that it would be more advisable between the Victorian and the start of the row homes there to appease any serious runoff. I met Mike down there, and he said he agreed with me, but it was denied that that tree be removed. It's now leaning over the street, and you can see how trucks, commercial trucks have parked there that have taken nicks out of the tree. So, not opposed to shade trees, love them, had one on Fourth Street for many years and opposed to it being taken out. But this particular tree is troublesome, and my daughter is not in a position, if somebody gets out and trips or falls over the root base in the dog walk area, if she be sued. So.
Yeah.
Um, new at this, so I thought I'll have my concerns.
Do you know when it was, uh, when the determination was made that it wasn't a candidate to be removed?
Um, no, because he didn't, I notified him, because I followed up with him. He said, no, it was denied.
Okay, so it'd be a shade tree. Okay, so it'd be a shade tree.
But I did, you know, shade trees are one thing, but this is just not, I guess, user-friendly tree for, for that, so.
Yeah, well, first, thank you, and I would encourage you to, or your daughter, I guess probably your daughter since she's the homeowner there or resident.
Yes.
To fill out another request and have our Shade Tree Commission and the arborists come take a visit and evaluate the tree. So if you need, if you, if you would like me to show you where on the website to find that form, I'd be happy to do so, so that you could direct your daughter to do that. And Shade Tree meets once a month, so, and they're the first Thursday of every month, so that's when they do their evaluations.
Okay.
Next month, I believe Shade Tree will also be meeting on the 9th. Is that correct?
I'll have to check it.
Yeah, I think we did move everything from the 2nd.
I'm a very much in the present moment, so I don't know what the 9th is.
No, it's just that it's always, it's always right before our workshop meeting.
Just to, I'm sorry, just to add, but Councilperson Malcoon's absolutely correct, like sometimes it takes a couple different requests from Shade Tree for them to evaluate and see that there is deterioration evident, and then they will make, do some action. So please do, do it again if it hasn't been done in the last, like, you know, season. And then also, I wanted to just get, can I get your last name for the record, please?
Pomilio.
Pomilio?
Yes, P-O-M-I-L-I-O. And however, I appreciate that suggestion, you just don't want to be the nuisance in the, in the community to say, I want this tree.
Oh.
So I was being.
It's not a nuisance.
I.
No, we welcome, we welcome it.
No, I, we appreciate that, and there's no, there's absolutely no harm in submitting a request.
In my opinion, I think it would be more conducive to that, the amount of runoff, because the other day, yesterday, there was quite flooding at the end, right there where the coffee shop was, and I felt bad for the car that was parked there, because it was, it was, looked like it was flooded out. So I think higher up might be. My next concern is, I walk media. I don't know what the rules are with the dog walk and planting things, but that becomes a nuisance with walking. Like I have a stroller that I use, and I have to vert to the street because some of the overgrowth in some of the dog walks in the areas are overgrown, especially, I don't know who you report to with the post office. The post office has the crepe myrtles.
Could you clarify when you, when you say dog walk?
The dog walk is the grass between the curb and the sidewalk.
Got it, okay.
The terminology is dog verge or dog walk.
Thank you.
And walking through the barrow, a lot of them are overgrown and not taken care of. I don't know if it's the responsibility of the homeowner.
It is.
Or the borough to say, you need to clean this up. But I noticed when I went to the post office the other day, someone was walking the opposite way, and I had to go out into the street because they had to move away from the bushes. So I was out in the street, there was a car turning left that nearly hit me because they took such a wide turn and there was no cars parked there. But the bushes there and bushes around the barrow, I really think need to be addressed for safety reasons.
Just for, in terms of process, it is the responsibility of the homeowner to keep that, but you can, if it's ever a situation where it's causing a safety issue, please just call the office and let us know, because we could have our code enforcement follow-up with them to make sure that they get that cut, so that there's no like line of sight